I'd like to call to order the August 5th Board of City Commissioners meeting. Call or roll, please.
Stevens, AG.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Maynor.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. For all that are able, please stand. We're honored today to have Pastor Amy Perkins from the United Presbyterian Church here to lead us in our prayer.
Let us pray. Gracious God, you are the giver of all good things. We thank you for this day and we pray for our city. We pray for all the people who live and work here. We pray especially for our leaders and we give thanks for them, for their hard work, and we pray that they will continue to lead with wisdom and discernment. We ask for your blessings upon all who are gathered here and continue to bless the city of Shawnee. Amen.
Commissioner AG, would you lead us in the flow? Oh, there it is, over there. It's always over there.
(inaudible) position, pledge.
(inaudible) flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
We were just discussing, so if you people don't think we're talking behind your back, is that Commissioner Harrod and Vice Mayor, Harrod said he had found another minister that said he'd be delighted to lead our prayer.
Said we need to pray for us.
And I said, "We need everybody to pray for us." So, that's great to find that out and tell him we welcome that. We would certainly welcome it. Item number one on our agenda is consider approval of the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, did you get, who made the second? Commissioner Harrod made the second, yes. Call or roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda. Once again, the chair will entertain a motion.
(inaudible) I got one question.
Okay.
I know what it, we've got one pickup runner in out of blocks, the street department, 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 whatever, but about half the paint's gone off the roof and the hood and everything else. I hope this, one of these is to replace that one, plus paint. It's probably about an eighty-some model, so.
We have a few of those.
Right.
Okay, again.
Was that, was that in the motion?
No, that wasn't a motion. I think she's making a comment before we get the motion. Before he's gonna give a motion, he wants to be sure that they're working on that paint job. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Commissioner Harrod, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, commissioners' comments.
Mr. Crywicky, my, the people that I talked to using the airport track were very thankful and appreciative of all the work there. It's really, really nice.
It's still ongoing. The contract isn't in place, but.
I know, it's still nice.
I've had two citizens mention to me that if the north section of Kickapoo that we're working on can be as good and smooth and wonderful as the south section, and I said, "You haven't seen anything yet," but I'm telling you, that what has been done on that south section and through our city is phenomenal. It's just, it's so smooth, it's just great. I was not expecting it to be that great, and I guess shame on me for not having such good expectations, but everybody, I'm taking my friends over and say, "You gotta drive this, you gotta drive and see this." This is part of Kickapoo at least. (inaudible).
He got right after it, too.
Well, it is a very, very nice job, so it's nice to see some exciting things happening in our city and with these improvements.
Exciting things, is our ozone plant gone, or what's the situation on that?
Ozone plant's gone.
(inaudible).
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the bank.
One of the things I'd like to mention and I'd like for you all to be thinking about is a quality of life survey. There's a lot of issues that have come up, like sidewalks and curbside recycling and bicycle routes and a lot of other issues that I would like to get some input from the people on, if we could consider maybe partnering with OBU or somebody to do that on a very low-cost basis. They'd like to see us do that. I think it's been a long time since the city's done something like that.
I guess the last survey that was done was done by United Way, when they talked about pride and those things, but I don't, you saw that survey, didn't you? But I, that's probably, this would be different, but I mean, at least we would have a list starting of some people maybe you could reach out to. I don't know, how do we progress with that? I think we need to, we need to kinda consider reaching out.
Maybe we could put it on the future agenda as a discussion item?
Have we ever set an agenda or a date for the planning session?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to get our facilitator back together and get everybody's schedules to fit again, and we're gonna do a four-hour wrap-up, and we're trying to do it later this month.
I was on the phone with him today. Carrie had been having difficulty getting ahold of him, and so they had a little communication difficulty, but she is calling him in the morning before ten o'clock to get some dates so that he can help us with that.
We're trying to put it together, Commissioner.
Okay.
That would be a good form for that.
Yeah, so we might wanna be sure that's added to the list. Any other comment? Commissioner Winteringer?
Just glad to be back and sitting here.
Commissioner Hall?
I'm good. I didn't notice you on the prayer list, but yeah, I'm glad you're back.
He didn't notice me, did he?
I'm on the prayer list.
He's on our church's average, so.
But I mean, because it was said.
Oh. Okay, we'll move on then. Item number four, citizens' participation, and again, I want you to understand, you citizens, that we do encourage you to participate. If you have something on your mind you would like to share with us, while we do have a three-minute time limit, we would love to hear from you if you have something. So, sir, do you have something to share with us?
(inaudible).
Well, you look like you're ready. You come up here and tell us your name and sign in and.
(inaudible).
I brought all my paperwork.
Uh-oh.
Pen's not writing too well.
Be sure of talking to microphones so the TV audience can hear you.
Yeah.
State your name.
Name Tom Smith, I'm of Risenham Shawnee, and I really brought all this up here to shake you up a little bit.
Okay.
I see Mr. Bryce is not here this evening, and really, Mr. Bryce and his crew are the one that I came up here for. In regards to the memorial, I am on the board of the memorial, I work with everybody down there. We just put in about thirty-five more pavers at the memorial. I've got an order for another fifteen ready to turn in, but what my, I wanna pat 'em on the back. There's three or four guys from the park department, and Mr. Bryce is probably driving the pickup truck you're thinking about, but those gentlemen go down there and they have done an exceptional job on placing the pavers, getting them lined up, making it look good, keeping the pave, the grass mowed, and I really think they need to, they need a little pat on the back, and if Mr. Bryce was here, I was gonna offer to take the four men that he had down there last time and purchase their lunch for 'em out of my pocket, just to show how much we do appreciate them.
Well, we will certainly have him reach out to you, 'cause I'm sure he'd like.
Well, I'll see him tomorrow at the board meeting, and I'll reiterate, but I did want it on record, those hands are doing a fantastic job over there, and we like what they do.
Thank you so much for that.
We'd like hearing that.
James is the granddad again, so that's why he's not here.
Oh, my God.
But Jeff Goddard's in the audience back there, if you wanna come to him.
People's gonna let put the papers.
Other citizens' comments. Other citizens' comments. Any others? Okay, if not, we'll move on. To the mayor's present.
I got one question on this mayor's presentation, I've seen it. City beautification committee awards, I thought we did a pretty good job out there, but I don't see our name on there. (inaudible).
Well, evidently, these people did a better job. I just selected.
I'm just saying, if the mayor's making the appointment, I'm taking care of myself when it comes to it.
Our presentation will be to Maybey Gare Museum, Langley Management Company, Consultant Services LLC, and Catherine Simon. Could you come to the podium along with the beautification committee, please? It's here. It's time to turn around this way so that everybody can see you. Look at them, okay? No face-then, they wanna see your pretty faces. This is a great, you know, I love doing these beautification awards. I mentioned a while ago about a United Way surveys, talking about pride in our city, and when we see, you know, as I drive around our city, and I know some of the city people get sick of me saying this, but what about that old building on McCarver? What about that building, oh, you know, the old bombs building? What about that? Because our travel, the roads that are traveled the most, and we have some, many people in our town, and when people like y'all, you all, Oklahoma phrase, do what you've done, it's setting an example of great pride in our city, and our beautification committee is fantastic. They work themselves to death, putting in flowers and doing all that, but our residents and our businesses that do that is because of you that are here. And I just want you to know, on behalf of it, the Maybey Gare Museum is the Empoli. Thank you, sir, for the great job that you did, and you'll get an award there. Fantastic. Langley Management, are they here? Yeah, well, I drive by your place all the time, and it is beautiful, and that horse in there, Langley, I drive by it, it's just gorgeous. Well, thank you so much for the job you do. Consultant Services, are they here? Well, there's 678 West Kickapoo Spur, for you people in here out looking, and be aware of that, and then Catherine Simon. Not here. 921 East Main Street. So, that, is that past, help me out, is that past Harrison? Or Feral Loop? I mean, it's more east there, huh? Like the second or third, on the north or south?
South.
On the south side, okay. Well, congratulations to all in your committee for doing such an outstanding job, and it makes Shawnee truly a better place for all the efforts that y'all put in and make it a beautiful place.
Thank you so much, Bishop.
Shawnee proud. You know, I don't think we were, did we vote on the consent agenda?
Did we?
Did we vote on the consent agenda? Okay. Senior moment here.
I didn't know.
Two old guys here thinking. Item number six, discussion, consideration and possible action on a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Shawnee Municipal Authority for financing of the municipal pool. I'd like, I see our city manager just left.
Can we hold off?
Yeah, well, he's coming in. Can you come in now? We're talking about the pool, and while he's getting ready for that, hopefully, you looked at those pictures out there. This is gonna be about the most exciting thing that's happened in Shawnee in a long, long time. So, Brian, would you like to take over now?
Absolutely. I was just trying to reach Commissioner Smith and Stevens. We cannot act on this agenda item tonight. We need a supermajority of commissioners to approve this financing, so.
You're kidding.
I tried to reach them, I've sent them a text message, I've called them, I can't raise them, so.
Look at that.
I cannot act on this one.
(inaudible).
Text six? Text six?
(inaudible).
Golly.
Can you address that, Nate?
I will explain, Nate Ellis Public Finance Law Group, when the city or the authority on its behalf is issuing debt, one of the things that you do under the statute is you actually waive competitive bidding. We went out, we did an informal bid process, and we received very attractive financing bids this morning from a number of different banks, and I'll let John tell you about those, but from a legal standpoint, you actually waive competitive bidding, which requires a seventy-five percent vote. That's six out of seven commissioners voting yes, and I think we've talked about this issue occasionally over time, just as a reminder, that's what it takes, actually, to approve at the authority level and the city level. My suggestion is maybe bypass this agenda item, continue on the agenda, and then hopefully we can, we can get 'em here, and if we get to the point where we can't, then we can talk further about what we wanna do.
Well, I have no problem doing that. What about your other commissioners, huh? Okay, we'll just leave item number six then open, and hope that they got your text message or.
I apologize, I was in the hall trying to call them.
Well, I understand, you apologize for that, you're trying to make things happen.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Chief, can we send you after one of them?
Go around with Steve.
Okay, item number seven, discussion, consideration and possible action of an additional thirty-day renewal of contract with the Chamber of Commerce regarding Convention Investors Bureau while awaiting the completed audit. Discussion. Mary Ann, would you like to?
Actually, Cynthia, you know, you, last time you approved it, you approved it for sixty days, 'cause they'd been unable to get their audit done. Cindy talked to them this last week, they're still waiting for the audit, they anticipate that the auditor will be on site this week, and then it will go to the chamber board at its next meeting, so staff is recommending a thirty-day extension.
Yeah.
Surely, if thought it's not here in thirty days, we'll have to talk about it again.
Are you, Brian, in with that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. I'm just having some trouble getting it finished, but they should be through within this week, actually.
Last email I got from Nancy was at 3:15, and said something about, I'd have to expect the audit to be approved by the chamber board Thursday, August 15th, and taken to the city commission for approval, so that sounds pretty darn quick.
They'd have it on your agenda the nineteenth, if they get it, the fifteenth.
I may as well extend it.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
Please, what's the second?
Commissioner Hall, second. Vice Mayor.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion, consideration and possible action on granting OG&E additional easements along SH102. I think we need a staff report on this, if somebody would share that with us. John, is that you, or? I saw that big map on there, I just, all that stuff.
I can speak to it, they hired us. Smith Roberts Land Services, OG&E, to acquire some additional easements on the state highway 102 project on the west side of the highway there, because ODOT, I guess, didn't get enough easement for them. Where they have to relocate their power poles and stuff is right on the right-of-way line, and they were concerned about sway and wind blowing the wires on someone else across the property line, plus being able to trim the trees. So, they initially made us an offer to purchase the easements, which I thought was a pretty good deal, but then someone with OG&E said, "Wait a minute, we, we have a franchise agreement with the city, we're entitled to have the easements granted to us."
Why did you hiccup? Why didn't you just take the offer?
And sure enough, and Mary Ann concurs with that, the ordinance does say they're allowed to receive the easement where they need it, so that's what this item is. And there's exhibits on page seventy-seven, seventy-eight of your packet showing the little descriptions and stuff, and it's all on the west side of the road, it's on lake property that the city owns there.
On the west side?
Of state 102.
Yeah, but is it from Lake Road or Belcher Road north? I'm trying.
It's all through there, from Belcher South.
Okay, from Belcher South, on the west side. I noticed on the north side, they're putting in a big high line, or somebody, is it?
Well, they reset some.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, because of the tornado.
Okay.
Now they need to relocate for the highway.
But not still.
Yeah, I saw those out there.
So unfortunately, that one letter of offer just ignored, even though it looked like a pretty good deal.
I don't think they'll keep money out of that.
They rescinded it, so. We're recommending approval, so.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion by Commissioner Winteringer, do we have a second?
All second.
Commissioner AG, second. Call or roll, please. Thank you, sir.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number nine, discussion, consideration and possible action on a resolution waiving building permit fees for the repair, reconstruction of structures damaged by the May 19th, 2013 storm event. Mr. Erickson, are you the one that's gonna enlighten us more on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'll address agenda item nine and agenda item 10. There's a staff report in your digital packet on page ninety-one that also addresses the resolution and the ordinance, but let me briefly summarize them. The proposed resolution would waive building permit fees specifically in the storm damaged area from the May 19th, 2013 event. We estimate that thus far, we've issued approximately seven permits with a total permit fee value of about fifteen hundred and sixty-three dollars, and in total, based on our assessment, the total loss, if approved, would be around five thousand dollars in terms of monetary impact, which is considered minimal, and staff does recommend approval of the resolution and finds that it will help, will help those members of the public impacted and be another helping hand during this event. The second item, agenda item number 10, is a resolution that would temporarily modify a section of the zoning code that deals with non-conforming structures. So a non-conforming structure or use is a, is a structure or use that's not conformant to today's zoning standards, and normally, most every city will have a non-conforming section, because over time, you would, you would phase those non-conformities out. However, in this particular case, some of the structures, this doesn't make a lot of sense to apply in this area, because those uses would not be phased out, and because they're still permissible. So for instance, manufactured home that was in the impacted area in the same storm event area from May 19th, may have been there prior to the existence of our current zoning code, which now requires a conditional use permit to place a manufacturer, a mobile home in that area. Now that property's wiped out, and even if an individual wants to put a similar structure back in the exact same location, technically, I've got, I've got to tell them that they've gotta come through and pay about four hundred and fifty dollars in fees and go through about a sixty-day process to get a conditional use permit and to be able to do that, and so I think that that's, that is another burden that we have identified in conjunction with the, with the resolution concerning the fees, and so if approved, that would do away with that requirement for a period of one year from, from the storm event. And so I did wanna mention that also on the, on the resolution as well. There's sunset clauses on both of these that do expire after the one-year period. And finally, anyone that has already submitted a permit and has paid for that would be eligible for reimbursement as part of this resolution.
I, just one comment. How do you know if somebody decides to build a new house or something, that it was actually done, storm damage occurred? Is that investigated a little bit, or, or say it wasn't in the storm path, but it's out by the lake? How would you, how would you know that?
Well, I think, you know, specifically, it's identified that it's the May 19th event, as opposed to just kind of our typical severe weather pattern, which inflicts its own damage on an annual basis, but.
Right.
We would be, we have damage assessments that we have available through emergency management and others, and we would require some type of proof that it was indeed impacted, some type of insurance claim or, or some evidence on that.
Other questions?
I think it's a great idea.
Well, I do, too. I hate to capitalize on people that have had a disaster hit, and it was pointed out, by the way, from Commissioner AG, who started this dialogue going, who lives out there with all that, and I truly appreciate that, and I think it's just something that we need to do.
Moore's doing something similar, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, are you, any thoughts on this? Are you comfortable with it?
Yes, sir. If it makes to the agenda, I usually agree with it. Yes, sir.
Well, but I'm in, no, I'm in. Okay. Thank you. No other questions, and we've had some discussion. I'll entertain a motion on item number nine.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Winteringer, second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
AG.
Abstain.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item number 10, discussion, consideration and possible action on an ordinance temporarily modifying section 1201.7 of the Shawnee Zoning Code by allowing the repair, reconstruction of a structure damaged by greater than fifty percent. And Mr. Erickson enlightened us on this item, too. Any further discussion needed?
Is that just in a storm area, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
That would be approved.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Hall, call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 11, consider bids, exterior restoration, exterior painting and window replacement for the Shawnee Municipal Auditorium. The staff recommendation here.
There is a memo attached to the packet that explains the events leading up to why this project was needed, and after looking at the bids, staff recommends award to Commercial Waterproofing LLC out of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, and the project is funded by a rollover in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand.
And I know there's, on their recommendation, on James' recommendation, that they're gonna try to do something else with our columns deteriorating.
The one column that has the three or four bricks that are cracked right down the center, we think can be replaced instead of patching the bricks, 'cause that kind of looks bad.
And that's, is that where the water's been coming, I believe? Is it coed that's over there?
Yes, and coed.
And they're saying that they're, that the roof was leaking.
It leaks in through the building and runs down the rafters and drips onto the drop ceiling.
So will they solve that problem?
Yes.
This will solve that problem? Okay. Okay. Other questions? Thank you. Okay, we have a staff recommendation that we approve this.
Follow staff recommendation, approve the bid.
Have a motion by.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
New business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business this evening.
How about administrative reports?
We do have one administrative report.
Okay, sir.
Chief France is gonna come and talk to us about dispatch protocol.
Good evening.
Good evening. We've talked a lot recently about dispatching and improving our communication system. We've just completed another aspect in regards to our communication system. Earlier this year, you, we approved the expenditure of funds to what we call priority dispatching for emergency medical dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, emergency police dispatch. This involves, we've had several meetings. It's, it's actually a software package to enhance our computer-aided dispatch. It is set up by national standards. It's reviewed. It involves, they came down, met with us to see locally what current protocols we had in place, procedures. There are some things that you can modify to your local procedures, but it's based off of, off national standards. They then come in and provide training to the dispatchers. The dispatchers are tested, trained and tested. We then implement the, the process, and I'm proud to announce that we have implemented the full scale of the processes. What this means to our citizens out there is they're receiving a standardized dispatching system where the dispatchers, it's not dispatchers A, way of doing things versus dispatcher B, way of doing things. It's set up. It prompts the dispatchers to answer, to ask certain questions as they go, as they take a call and go through a call. So it's, it's always gathering the pertinent information and sifting through that and helps them stay focused and organized, even though you may have somebody screaming on the other end of the phone. It prompts them so, or in that type of thing. So it's something that React Ambulance has wanted for, for several years now, and it's providing them services. The fire chief this morning commented in the staff meeting that they were appreciative of the information that they're now receiving. So it helps you gather the information. It sends it up on their, on their screens, on their laptops or iPads also out there. So anything from handling a call to taking a report is assist in gathering that pertinent information. Also, if it's like a, an emergency scene and you've got somebody standing over a victim of a medical emergency, the dispatcher has the training now that can help assist and give that, that person their medical, not so much advice, but the steps that they need to do as a, as a, as a person to give first aid to a victim on it. So the nice thing is, is with this system, nobody has ever filed a tort claim that's, that stood against this system. So it's a tried and proven system. They choose to know over thirty-five hundred dispatch centers across the nation and across the world. So it's a very tried and true, tested product, and we're very, very pleased to, to bring this on board. And once again, we're just another notch of professionalism in the communication world.
When was that put on? Just in the last few days or how?
We went live with it last week, full scale.
Wow.
So we've been working on it, on it for months. The company has been very good. They've come down and put on the training, met with us several, several times. It's made sure that it integrated with our computer systems and our current CAD systems. So I found them to be a very, very professional organization, really great people to, to work with it. And they actually sat down in the dispatch room with the dispatchers, went through it as, as we brought it on the, the testing phase, so.
It, it has different types of questions for the different types of calls?
As you start, as you start the question, as you start a call and you type in like what the, the nature of it, and then it starts popping up the next screen and it'll ask, you know, what's happening here and then it'll prompt up.
So it changes the questions based on the way that responses?
Exactly. However you respond to it, it flips it up.
It's cool.
And so it prompts, so it doesn't matter if it's a thirty-year dispatcher or a six-month dispatcher. They're both going to ask the same questions in the same, same order and gather all the same information. So very, very helpful. So very pleased.
While you're here, I will say to the other commissioners that I've visited Muskogee on this nine-one-one trip, and then we visited Lawton. And the chief has been on both those trips, and I've been kind of standing next to him, and I hear them saying something that they have that really seemed innovative to me. And the chief has said, we have that, we have that. So our nine-one-one systems that we have are pretty much up to speed, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
With things that, that's really exciting to see compared to a lot of others that do not have those same things. And thanks to the previous commissions, I'm sure, that put funding in that, and thanks to everybody on board at the staff that has implemented that.
Mayor, I would just add that, that obviously, the chief's recommendation to go to, you know, this type of programmatic dispatch is certainly provides a better service for our citizens. I want you to know too that down the road, we'll be dispatching vehicles appropriately and saving money doing that. Instead of, you know, sending everybody out to a automobile accident when there's no, no injuries, we know that upfront. So David's folks don't go screaming out there.
Cool.
Russ's folks don't go screaming out there. We know the nature of the accident more upfront and what's involved in it. So that we know exactly who to dispatch. So it's not only a service, a better service that we're providing. It's also, you know, cost savings for us in terms of what, knowing what resources to put on a particular call.
Well, that's very exciting. I, I think that's great. I looked at, I think this last week you had over two, two thousand calls in nine-one-one, didn't you, or the week before?
Yes, sir. It's been busy.
These people work down there hard, and it's not emergencies as much as it is my water line's leaking, what do I do or what? But I, I don't know how, we have to start an education process for our, our public on what to call on nine-one-one. And while I'm speaking on that, what is the other number that they could call if they have so that the public is aware if they need some assistance other than an emergency for now? What is the number?
Okay. The non-emergency number is two-seven-three-two-one-two-one or two-seven-three-two-one-two-two.
Okay, so.
Just two-one-two-one or two-one-two-two are the non-emergency numbers, so.
Thank you again. That's exciting news.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else?
Just, just a couple of other housekeeping issues. I will be out of town starting Thursday until the twentieth, the twenty-first of, of August. And so I will not be here at the next city commission meeting. Thank you very much for the time off. I really appreciate it. I also wanted to, we were trying to do an administrative report on our grants to the Abidis Foundation with James Bryce being in Arkansas with his new grandbaby and some other things. We weren't able to do that tonight, but we'll get some more information to you here shortly. Our, our first letter that we need to go, we call a letter of intent to the Abidis Foundation, is due the fifteenth of August. And Justin and James are working on that. We'll get some more information to you on those projects, but we just weren't able to do that. And we talked a little bit about the retreat and, and we're working on dates for hopefully late, late August. So that was all I had, unless there's any questions.
Are you talking about a full day, full weekend?
We're talking about a half day, just a wrap-up of what we're talking about. Any other questions or city managers?
I guess we didn't get ahold of Steve or Pam?
I got a text from Steve saying he's unable to get out of his office.
Can we go to his office? Take the meeting over there?
Wish we could. Not posted to do that. Can't take the key?
Well, we could. We don't have to adjourn this meeting. We could go ahead and go to the airport authority, municipal authority.
You can keep going, but it, you know, I suspect at this point, if he gets out of the office, he's not coming. I told him we were holding the item. The other thing that you could do is continue the item to the special meeting that we're having. Is it, when's it coming?
Thursday.
Worried about it.
Thursday, but I figured, but it's that time of day that probably Commissioner Hall will be gone and.
I'm gone.
You're gone.
I'm on vacation this week.
Oh, gone it. I hate it. This is, I'm sorry. As mayor, this is embarrassing to me, and I just want you to know that I am so sorry for you people to come from Oklahoma City.
Let's go ahead and text him back, then we're waiting, and we'll go ahead through the agenda and see what happens.
Ask him what time he can be here. The chief's coming to pick him up.
There is it. At least we know where he is.
Yeah, ask him what time he can be here because.
Well, then I'm not going to adjourn this section. I guess I'm just going to recess it. I'm going to recess our commission meeting and move on over to the Shawnee Airport Authority and call it to order. And we do have a quorum, so the Shawnee Airport Authority, I'll consider approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call or roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any new business?
No new business or administrative reports, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sir. Then I will adjourn this meeting. I guess I can read all this in great detail four or five times to stall if that's what you want me to do. I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and I'll call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And we do have a quorum, so item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Vice Mayor Harrod. Call or roll, please.
Hall?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, is this, does this take a supermajority here too of this? So we're just, we're going to have to bypass this one. I'll do number three, consider bids at the water treatment sludge removal project. Your staff recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This, this bid is, this project is a bid that we opened last commission meeting, and staff is making the recommendation to award the sludge removal project SMA fourteen oh two to Nutraject Systems in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand dollars and fifty cents. And then just a little, little bit more information. Once this sludge is removed, we will be in the process of re-stabilizing the bank down there that is being washed out.
Is that north side or south side?
The water treatment plant. Like they're down off Kippee.
In that pond?
Yeah.
What was that big sludge truck we got going today?
That, that's out of the north side. It hauls, hauls the sludge.
North side.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Going to need another tractor that this?
No, no, this is a sludge, this is a sludge removal for the, the.
Water treatment.
Yeah, for the water treatment plant and the filter backwash and the clarifier blow down the sludge.
How, how often do you have to do that?
We're required by DEQ to get land permitted to take the sludge and inject it in the ground. And if this pond is cleaned out, and depends on how much sludge we produce every two to three, possibly four years.
What did we pay last time? Do you, do you know?
One twenty-six.
And it's how much?
Went up.
Two oh eight.
My days have gone up about.
Inflation.
Dollar and something a gallon.
Yeah, it's went up, and the, the pond was in a little bit better shape last time, so that might have something to do with it.
Everything else is.
I might add, Commissioners, that you all know that the sedimentation pond that we have that's just adjacent to this one blew out in the storms and flooding. So this is part of our agreement with our DEQ to get this one cleaned out so that we can, we're still, we're still in compliance with all the rules and regulations. But we told them we'd go ahead with our ongoing maintenance project of this, on this, so that it sort of keeps us in, in the good graces.
Well, if this, are we going to have a, well, we got you here. Couple of questions. With that pond that the dam blew out, are we going to either rebuild that dam? Or are we going to just have one, and now we'll have to clean it out more often?
We're, we're going to rebuild.
So it'll feel fewer.
Yeah, we're going to have to stabilize that riverbank, or it's just going to keep washing out.
Not any way we can get any grants for that due to, because you were working on that.
Don could probably speak to this better, but the tornadoes and the, and all the rain and the flooding were tied together from, from a storm standpoint. So we're pretty hopeful that we'd be reimbursed for eighty percent of this by FEMA and twelve and a half percent by the state.
Okay.
Cross the fingers, you know, but they, they connected the two events, and so that's how we, that's how we're hoping that it'll be, we'll be assisted in.
So is he still pumping the sludge out of that, also the one that the dam broke, or did all the sludge get washed out?
Some, some of it did.
So, but he's going to still have to pump both of those for that price?
No, he's going to, he's just going to pump one, just the one pump, just the one pond that has been damaged. The other pond is a pond that we have in use, the north pond.
Have we got two or three more years on that or?
Yes. We should at least have two more.
Okay, okay.
That's a lot of sludge.
It's a lot of sludge.
Except the staff recommendation.
Do you, do you do this eight separate, A, B and C, or do you do?
Just do them, Mr. Go, one at a time. That way we can take as long as we can.
You need to do it one at a time.
Yes, anyway, okay.
I'll say.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod and a second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B, Jefferson Terrace Waterline Project.
As, as the commission may know, this was a project that we, staff recommended to award to Orion Construction at the last commission meeting. And since then, Orion failed to execute the contract, the award contract. And since then, we have pulled the award from Orion and would like to re-award to Jordan Construction.
It's the same price for?
It's, it's, it's the next lowest bidder at five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Did make their bond or did not do it?
No, they wanted to add a provision where we would waive any liability that they might have because they were working on the backside of the meter. That's something we can't do legally, and I don't know why we would want to do it anyway.
How much is this bid?
Five seventy-nine, eight eighty-seven.
What was Orion's bid?
Orion's was four, four twenty-eight, seven seventy-nine.
They just wanted to have a contract.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference.
Yeah. They don't like to forfeit their bid bond or anything?
No, because they, no.
Because they found a reason and excuse.
And we aren't having to rebid it. I mean, you only get a bid bond to cover the cost of rebidding.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter. Have a motion by Vice Mayor. Harrod, do you have a second?
All seconded.
Second by Commissioner Agee. Call or roll, please.
Harrod?
Here, yes.
Agee?
Want to sleep?
Hi. Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I can't hardly hear you. You're going to speak up like you talk to your kids and not like you talk to your husband.
Okay.
Yell it out.
We should not harass the staff, but you're hearing. Item number C is a twenty-four inch sewer rehab project, SMA thirteen dash oh seven. You're at this time, I guess, are opening the bids?
Um, I've got, I've, uh.
Already opened them, huh?
Um, what I have here is the, the bids I just opened for the slip line project for the twenty-four inch concrete sewer line. It's north of town. It ends at the, the north side sewer plant, and I have the bids I'll read off. First bidder was Urban Contractors in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Second bidder was Jordan Contractors for two hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Third bidder is Craft Room Construction of Oklahoma City for three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And then Mary Van, Merriman Excavation out of Woodstock, Illinois for five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And I'd like to defer wardeness project until the next commission meeting.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call or roll, please.
Thank you.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any new business?
No new business or administrative report.
Administrative. Item number six is consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation or other options regarding encroachment into city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by two-five-os. The chair will entertain a motion to recess to executive session. Have a motion?
Motion to recess.
Have a motion to recess. Do we have a second?
All seconded.
Have a second? Call or roll, please.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Agee?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we will recess to executive session. Aye. Have you got anything back from Steve? Here he comes. Item number seven, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding encroachment into city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 250S. I am going to reconvene this meeting, and I'll entertain a motion.
Discussion, which one?
That's number seven. If there's no motion, I'm going to adjourn, I'm going to move to the back item. Yeah. Okay, I'm not hearing a motion, so we will move on back to the item, and let me find it here. Item number two, discussion, consideration, and possible action on a resolution authorizing the Shawnee Municipal Authority to issue its sales tax revenue, no, series 2013, in the aggregate principal amount of $3,040,000 to finance waterpark improvements and costs related to financing. I think we have heard from the financial advisor. Do we need any further discussion in this matter before we vote?
He hasn't read you the bids yet.
Huh?
Yeah, we haven't heard from him.
No, we didn't hear, he hadn't read you the bids yet.
Item number two?
Yes, sir. He needs to read the bids.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, hear from the financial report. We haven't heard the bids. Tell them.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm John Waldo with VOSC, and we sent out bid packages to 10 financial institutions and made sure all the financial institutions in Shawnee recovered, and they sent the bids back to us at 10 o'clock this morning. And you should have a sheet, I think we passed it out, and First United Bank, which is a, in Oklahoma, has an office in Shawnee, bid 2.43. Our estimate that we were using, oh, I don't know, a month ago, was 2.45, so it's right in line with their estimate. I would highly recommend that the city, or the municipal authority, select First United Bank, and Bond Counsel, Nate Ellis, you've heard from him, he's here, and he can, he can talk to any legal questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay, we hear a recommendation from them that we consider First United Bank for this.
That on a single sheet?
Yes.
It's on this way.
Mayor, here, for 2.4.
What's the term of this note, again?
Seven years.
10 years.
Seven.
Seven years. Seven years.
So what was the original interest that we paid, like on the expo and stuff like that?
1.98 and 2.15, something like that.
Close up about 300.
And the non-taxable were just below 2, and the taxable.
Is this taxable or non-taxable?
This is non-taxable.
This is taxable, huh?
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt, okay, okay.
So it's actually up about half a percent.
This is a little bit longer term as well, that was implied.
Not much money. Not much money.
Okay, any further discussion?
When they accept a bid?
I'm sorry. Did you make a motion to?
I second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod to accept it, and a second. Call or roll, please.
Okay, it was a motion to accept.
To approve the resolution.
Approve the resolution.
Okay.
Right.
And then it was second advice?
Commissioner Hall. Do we need you to read it, Marion?
I can if you.
No, I don't know. I said, do we need it done?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we don't need it done. Let's move on, then. Call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
You can lay it down.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority, and I'm going to reconvene our Shawnee Municipal Authority. We just voted on that.
Now we're going to reconvene.
We're going to reconvene the city commission meeting, as item number six, discussion, consideration, and possible action on a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by Shawnee Municipal Authority for financing of the municipal who.
This is just your approval of it because it involves using your sales tax and authorizes the municipal authority to enter into the debt, and the appropriate is a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
Have a motion to approve, and a second by, is that you, Commissioners, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, second, okay. Any, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, I don't want to leave anybody out of it. Okay, if not, call or roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will adjourn the city commission meeting, and thank you to you people for staying with us so long. Thank you.